Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I want to welcome you to our Portsmouth City Council meeting. And at this time, I would ask that everyone stand for a moment of silence. We're recognizing, all of us up here are wearing on our lapels the colors of the Ukraine people and their country, and we would ask that you participate in this moment of silence and pray for the people of Ukraine. And after that, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Now, if we return to the flag, we'll now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and thank you for
Once again, thank you all for being here, and it's so good to see our young people. Always good to see young people in the chamber. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on February 22nd, 2022, a regular meeting on February 22nd, 2022, and a special called meeting on March 1st, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, we're in need of a motion and a second.
We've adopted.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker presentation?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of five minutes to speak. As you approach the speakers podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We do have a presentation tonight, and our presentation is a proclamation for Girl Scout Week. Ladies and parents, would you join me up front, please? Come on, don't be shy. You all can come over here. Come on, come on. I'm not, I'm not gonna bite you. Come on closer. I'd like you guys to come around over here. I need a couple to stand on this side. Come over here, please. Trust me, the mayor doesn't bite. Ladies and gentlemen, the proclamation reads, whereas March 12th, 2022 marks the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia, and whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character; and whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may continue to contribute to their communities; and whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons; and whereas more than 2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 110 years of this American tradition, with more than 11,000 of them members of the Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast, which serve girls in southeastern Virginia and northeastern North Carolina. Now therefore, I, Shannon E. Glover, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of March 6 through 12, 2022 as Girl Scout Week. Keep selling those cookies, okay? In Portsmouth, and applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership development of America's girls. And witness whereof, and on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be affixed this eighth day of March, 2022. Congratulations, ladies and parents. Did you get pictures? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast is proud to be one of 110 councils serving the nation. For over 110 years now, we've been serving girls and providing a safe environment for girls to learn about themselves, grow, take on new challenges, and now in this age try STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math from the age of kindergarten and up. We're very fortunate to have dedicated adult volunteers, as you see an example of today, that serve us in each of our cities. Our council covers Hampton Roads and Outer Banks areas, and we're really delighted to be serving girls for decades and decades, and here's two, 110 more years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you all for your service.
Special for you all, really briefly, that you come up here.
Cookies. Cookies.
The most important part.
Yes. Hi, La Diva, how you doing? Thank you. Stand around, because you know, Aunt Iva is gonna wanna see this picture.
You wanna see which one?
Yeah.
Which one do you like?
Neither, but...
Okay. One, you got one. Okay, and then, okay, mom. All right.
The mayor didn't get his cookies yet.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome. Let's give him another round of applause. We have now come to the item on our agenda, public hearing, item 22-64. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item and resolution we are considering?
Yes, sir. Item A, U.P. 2201 Downtown Resolution granting the request of Marlon Milligan of Reality Property Group 757 for a use permit for an entertainment establishment and a restaurant and sports bar on a .087 acre parcel located at 600 Court Street in the downtown D1-T4 Urban Center zoning sub-district. The future land use map, Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, designates this property as mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by Louis Esther Corp. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads a resolution granting a use permit, U.P. 2201, to Marlon Milligan to operate an entertainment establishment in a restaurant or sports bar at 600 Court Street.
Thank you, ma'am. And is the applicant present, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward, sir, and if you would state your name and address, please. And, sir, you have 10 minutes. You're welcome, sir.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Marlon Milligan, 2231 Portsmouth Boulevard. I'm here representing privileged restaurant and sports bar located at 600 Court Street, as well as to address any concerns from the neighbors or the neighboring businesses. The location was previously stated was a sports bar for over 15 years with entertainment license, but the license expired after two years of non-usage. So we had to reapply to update the entertainment license, but it's not like we're opening an office building to a restaurant. I'm acknowledging and adhering to all the recommendations set forth by the Planning Commission and the policy set forth in the resolution when I spoke with the planning as far as the security or anything that was detailed into the Planning Commission. In the Planning Commission hearing, there were concerns from the senior home, we helped keep the parking lot clean, which we met with them and we assured that our staff after business hours would keep that clean. Also, we met with, we talked with the church, and another concern that I brought forth was the parking, the parking lot that's shared with Trinity. And my advice that I advised to the Planning Commission was that, hey, Sunday, we'll open late, we'll give their congregation first priority for parking, and we will open later that day. And I know how it is, because I'm a trustee at St. Mark's, and to have elderly people walk from the distance, and we take up, even though the parking lot is a city-owned parking lot, and we don't have to do it, but I advised them that we would do that. And also, we spoke with Mercy Drop staff, which feeds the homeless right adjacent to our property, and we said we're gonna do one day feeding with them, and they have Tuesdays, and we're trying to set a date that when we open, what day we can do the feeding. Also, we had a meeting at another establishment with the police chief, the city manager, and economic development at another restaurant there. It was a meeting in concerns for Old Town safety. And the meeting went well, and they was very adherent to everything that we brought forth and listened to, and it was, I think it would be a good partnership to partner with them in regards for Old Town safety for any incidents that occurred. And as detailed narrative of the business is, business located at 600 Court Street, would be that one of the core that would put you in the mindset of being in preferred seating or box suites. So we didn't go with the ideal approach of having like the ideal sports bar, we wanted to go in the mindset of having box suites and, you know, have five-star dinners like the Dallas Cowherd State of Mercedes-Benz Atlanta as well. The menu would be five-star meal consisting of steaks, lamb chops, fresh seafood. The seating is detailed on our flooring plan to over 100. The interior design would be that of a prestigious restaurant, including tinted televisions, marble tile flooring, suede seating, original painted murals, spectacular bar design, highly detailed bathrooms. The hours of operation are eight to two, Monday through Sunday, on certain days providing breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Our goal is to provide a safe family atmosphere where you can eat, and nice beer, cheer for your favorite team, and relax in a nice ambiance environment. I think the downtown, Old Town area is in need of that. We are looking to be a catalyst of dining, being able to cater to corporate dinners, sitting, eating lunches, and other affiliate that choose to dine in a nice establishment. As well as, I'm here to accept any acknowledgements, any concerns, and any words of imperishments. Thank you for your concern and your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Councilman Woodard, sir? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And how you doing, Mr. Milligan?
I'm doing good.
All right. You said this is a shared parking lot that you'll be using with the seniors, or this is your parking lot that you'll just be sharing with them?
No, no, no. It's a, it's a city parking lot.
Right.
Before we went to zoning, we talked with Milhouse, is no parking ordinance in the Old Town area. So I was just stating that what I would do, because that's a parking lot that they use on Sundays, and for their congregation to probably have to walk all the way around the corner when they can always park here and just go there, that's what we will allocate, open up later. So they will give them first priority for their congregation. I think it's 10 o'clock.
Right, and that's just for the church, but for the senior citizens?
All, it's the same parking lot.
All the same parking lot?
It's the same parking lot, yeah. It's the same parking, but I think majority of our parking is gonna come from the parking garage by Navy Federal, honestly, you know, because that's in the back of our building, but that is really on the side and in the front of the senior living.
Right, but you're just saying that you got awareness that maybe some of your clientele may be parking in that garage, I mean, that parking lot, and you wanna make sure that the seniors still have that access there, so that's what you're saying?
Yeah, because it's actually paid parking, and on Sundays, I think it's Saturday and Sunday, it's open parking. So we would say, since it's open, we'll just go ahead and allocate to opening up later in the day so they can get first priority of parking, and we've been telling them that for the first couple, yeah, the planning, because I mean, it makes more sense, you know, to go ahead and do that anyway.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So when you say opening up later, I know Sundays, for instance, when football season comes.
I know, and we talked, man, we talked about it. So our thing is to open, if they get in and start at 10, is try to open 12, 12:30. And I said, that's gonna push it, where people want to come in and, what you call it, tailgate or something like that, but that's what we said we could do. We can do 12, and I think...
For me, I wanna see you guys be successful in doing the NFL season, that's a big thing, so is it some way that you can just still open up on time and just, that parking, you just kind of deter it somewhere else?
Our second, our second option was to have hired personnel in the parking lot and to detour our staff. Only thing that we asked for was maybe like two staff parking, and that would be later in the day, just in case if we had waitresses, and the day, we don't want our waitresses to walk this during, this not Sunday, but during after hours to walk late. So that's the only thing, we were gonna purchase two or three parking lots from the city, but on Sunday, we wanna allocate probably even a parking monitor.
Well, maybe a more cost-efficient method is to just maybe put up some signs there.
But I didn't know if I can do that on city property.
Are they able?
Yeah, I didn't know if I could do that on, if that's the city parking lot, that'll be somebody I had to talk with, the city parking lot.
Well, can I, I'm asking a question. Are they able to do that?
I'm not, I'm not aware. I'll have to report back.
Okay.
That's not something that I...
Because for me, I just don't wanna see them missing that opportunity.
Yeah.
That's one of the biggest days for any sports bar.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for presenting to us. How many parking spaces is it gonna be total serving, and will it be adequate for the number of guests that, I mean, I guess it would be some off-street parking or...
The parking, it never came to question when I spoke with Milhouse, because it's not like, when we, when you do a business in another, well, I know you are in another location, is you have to allocate so many parking spaces, but in the Old Town area, when I was trying to explain it, you know, see, where would our parking come from? You say, well, in this area here is no parking allocated for the downtown area, and you said, well, the good thing is, you have this parking garage, you have off-street parking, then you have the parking in the back. And the only thing that we were saying in the parking in the back, Banglin-Bangle, they have parking spaces, Trinity have parking spaces, and there's some reserved parking space for that. The only ones that we wanted to reserve was maybe two or three for like our staff that come in, you know, late on at night. We don't want our waitresses, you know, walking five or six blocks, you know, after hours. So as far as Sunday, nah, it's, Sunday, we can't, we can't control anything with Sunday.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, and then Councilman Moody.
Yes, but our city manager asked Mr. Baldwin to address the sign issue about putting a sign there to detour the guests to park.
Certainly, in fact, let me, if you don't mind, I answer a couple of questions that have come up.
Go ahead, sir.
So council's aware. So in the city's downtown, there's no parking requirement, so individual businesses do not have a minimum parking they have to meet. The general notion that the parking is met through city parking garages, some private parking lots, and on street. So they do not have an official parking requirement. As far as signage, you know, the parking lot is operated by the city's parking authority. Parking authority certainly work to make sure if there needs to be signage out there, that it can be properly noted out there as necessary. I'll just make one other comment, too. The discussion about the hours of operation and the conditions that were proposed by the staff and the Planning Commission, there are no restrictions on hours. The restriction on hours is what the applicant has proposed himself, but if you look at your actual resolution yourself, the proposed conditions do not include any restrictions on hours of operation.
So, so he can put a sign out there instead of having a person directing people from the parking lot?
Right, and we can certainly work with them to make sure that if they have a parking situation, that it can be properly handled out there. There are a few users out there that have a few reserved parking spaces, not all of it, three or four spaces here and there, and the rest of it's open, public parking, but definitely work with the parking authority to make sure whatever needs to be done to manage the parking lot gets taken care of, whether it's signage, or staffing, or whatever it needs to be.
Does that address your concern, Mr. Milligan?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Good. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor, then. Then Councilman Woodard.
I think Mr. Baldwin answered most of it, but the signage in the city-owned parking lot, you know, we've had discussions on that parking lot before, and it's unclear what, what rights the businesses adjacent to that have with that parking lot. The signage in there now is a smorgasbord. You know, we got reserved places, we got other places that have nothing, so, and I've asked this question before, and I don't think the usage of that parking lot is, has yet to be defined, and it still looks unkept. I was through there just a week ago. It's a disgrace as a parking lot, and people who want to use it are confused with the signage. I think now it says after hours, the parking is free, there's no charge, but that, that message is in about 12 size font, which most people don't see. So I would like for staff to report back to council on what's gonna be done to improve that parking lot and also clarify the usage of it. You know, what I heard tonight, you might be tendering the applicant to put signs up there for his use, but that's not what's been conveyed in the past. So, and speaking of the applicant, you know, you, you had to go through the unusual process of going back to planning on the second time. Do you know why that happened?
Yes, I do. She, she stated that they, they made a mistake and put February the 4th, I think, on the signage.
Well, yeah, that, that signage, and it's normal that when a use permit is coming down the pike to planning, that is posted for the public's edification. But initially, the sign was out in the public, then it was moved back in the outdoor seating parameter, then the, then the date was changed on the signage, so...
Yeah, she told me that, she told me that they stated that they made a mistake at planning, that they made a mistake and put that on.
I don't know who made the mistake, I know it was changed.
That's why she called me and said the city attorney, said we had to go, but said they made a mistake.
And even prior to that, I think there was some work going on initially without a, a permit, so...
Yeah, we got permits and everything right here, plans right here.
Yeah. Well, no, you do now, but it's been, it's been a rough, rough transition to, to get it open.
Yeah, we stayed fast.
And, and all of those things, I, I don't know that staff, I, I've never seen them make a mistake on a, on a use permit sign. Don't, don't know who did it, but it's enough for me to, I will be voting no on it, but I do wish you, your luck in your business.
If you contact her, she stated that she made a mistake, that they made a mistake.
I, I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, I mean, that's what she stated to me, that, hey, look, we made a mistake.
Okay.
And that's what she stated, because they sent out letters and said, hey, look, we made a mistake on that.
Mr. Milligan, you don't have to defend yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, no, I wasn't defending myself, I was just, because I didn't know if you had the same communication with Ms. Chalk that I did.
Yeah, I didn't know, that's all I was...
Hold on, Dr. Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker. You are out of order.
Yeah, I apologize. You're right, you're right, ma'am.
But, but he has a right to ask questions, they have a right to... They were conversating, and I think it was getting ready to come to a close, so...
And I wish the applicant success.
Thank you, I thank you very much.
Councilman Woodard, sir?
Hope this is just the final question, but I just wanted to know in details, I know you said you was gonna work with Mercy Drop on feeding the homeless. I think it's a wonderful plan for you guys to be incorporated in the community, especially down in Old Town, you know, can have a slew of homeless people at times. Just wanna know what's your plan exactly for doing that?
Mercy Drop feeds them on Tuesday lunch, so it's maybe just getting, piggybacking off what he does, you know, and giving a date, because we even spoke to him when I seen it, and I was like, hey, what you doing? You know, and we got a food bank at St. Mark's, but that's, you know, that's at St. Mark's, you know, so he's here, he said, yeah, we feeding the homeless this, and this was, man, maybe two years ago, you know, years, you know, when he said, and I said, well, look, when we open, what you think about, you know, because, you know, he's feeding out the back of a van, and they're coming, and it might maybe be 20, 30, private plus that he's feeding, but he's doing a good job, and I said, man, that's something that I would like, you know, to help you with and to do, and he was like, and that was it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's gonna be the, the simple part, and I mean, as, as you say, a slew, a slew of homeless people, I mean, is, we had issues, and I think that's what the sign usage had moved, like some were sleeping in front of our building, and that was right there, and if you see that area right here, that's right with the fence, they were sleeping there and sleeping right there, and then we'll get a call from the owner, hey, look, you know, can you clean it up, this and that, and I mean, if we tell them to go, tell them leave, you know, they'll come back, because we're not there, so that's it.
Okay, well...
But that's what, yeah, speaking with Mercy Drop, yeah. You know, there's other programs that we, that we actually affiliated with, big homeless and other mentorship programs and stuff like that, so I mean, it's...
Okay, well, we're glad that you're, you're bringing other things to the table, as well as your, your restaurant in Old Town, so, you know, like I say, best lucks to you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes, sir.
I do have a couple of questions. I know you said you talked to Trinity Church, which is your neighbor. Have you talked to Pastor Granite Trinity?
No, I haven't, no, I haven't.
Who'd you talk to at Trinity?
We talked, when we had the meeting, the planning meeting, that's when it came up, and that's when I allocated and told them that we would go ahead and, I guess they had members there, or somebody that was representing the church, and that's when we stated that we would do that.
And they were okay with that?
I mean, they didn't have, what's their opinion, that they, you know, any other thing, any other concerns about it, but that's, I think that was their main concern, was, you know, the parking that we, you know, and I mean, it's not like that we had to do it because it's an open parking lot, but it's just something that I felt that we could do, because I don't think it would, you know, it wouldn't hinder us from doing anything.
Right, and the only reason I ask the question is because, you know, Trinity is an older church, it has older parishioners, and from the proximity of the parking lot to get into their building, you know, they may need some close proximity on those Sundays to get their people in there, but you did say you'll coordinate with them to make sure all that happens.
Yeah, that's why I said we would allocate that right there for to do that, because that's one concern that I had with it, as far as the parking, once I learned, because we went all, through all the steps to see who has the parking lot, and the parking lot, that's when I found out it was owned by the city, and that's when I found out from, I guess, Saturday and Sunday is open parking lot or something, you know, that's what I found out from them, and that's when I said, well, Sunday, we can allocate Sunday to opening late, so his congregation can get in there before, and that was it.
Yeah, and I, and I also think that with the senior house, the senior building right at the corner there, you know, I know a lot of those nice folks there, they may have some issues too with proximity of parking, but I'm sure you'll work with them. The other question is, on your security plan, do you have a security plan in place?
The security plan is gonna be for, provided for entertainment-only days, like if we have live jazz, if we have something, you know, because our main concern was, we couldn't have jazz, we couldn't have comedy, we couldn't have live band, none of that, you know, and that fell under the umbrella of the entertainment license, and I didn't know, you know, till I read it, like, hey, you can't have a live band, you can't have jazz, and we spoke with some of the people that's dealing with the Jazz Festival, like, hey, we can have artists, we can get you to be one of the vendors, this and that for that, so... So we couldn't provide any of that. No comedy, no jazz, no nothing.
Right, and I think that's Mr. Baldwin, that's under our present rules under our use permit, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's under the entertainment establishment use.
Right, and so under entertainment establishment, you know, we just want to make sure, I think the purpose is, the other question that I had for you, so you plan on pretty much having a food establishment, a sports bar, that's what it primarily will be?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, because it was, it was actually a sports bar there for 15 years.
It was.
And it just failed two years out of us signing our lease, and we, that's what it was, they failed two years out of it, so it was a sports bar for 15 years at the same location.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Battle, so you have the floor.
You remind me of myself when I was trying to get into business, and one business I have, it took me two years to get a use permit. I don't care who the person is that comes before me that wants to do business and have that hope and dream, I'll do everything I can to assist you in achieving, and I will be voting for you and praying for you and your business to do well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, sir, we certainly appreciate you coming forward, and we'll be taking our vote shortly, but this is a public hearing, so we have to allow for other people. But thank you for your presentation. As I indicated, this is a public hearing, and as such, anyone from the community can't come up and speak on this matter. If you come forward, you will have five minutes. So at this time, the floor is open to anyone who wants to come and speak on this public hearing. I believe we do have a registered speaker on this item, Mr. Freddie Taylor.
Good evening. The only thing that I want to come up and say, well, you spoke on the security, I just want to ask the owners, will they be willing to open their establishment and let it be registered within the city as a safe haven? Will they do like events, like maybe Easter egg hunts at their place, or little functions for kids and the teenagers that's there? That's the only thing that I have, I have nothing against what they're doing, I like it that black businesses are starting to increase within the city. But like the security, like are you going to have, you know, your own security staff, or you want to bring in off-duty police officers? And basically, man, like, the teens don't have anything in the area, will you be willing to have like a teen night, game night for them or something to bring them in? You come back up, because I mean, that's what I wanted to ask you, because I read it, and I wanted to know.
Sir, sir, sir.
Okay, okay, that's right, my bad, my bad. I apologize.
The mayor calls folks up.
Yes, sir, I apologize. But yeah, that's what I wanted to ask the owner, if that was possible, them to, because we don't have any places for the teens to hang out. We already know the situation with directions and stuff, but like, them being a small business and establishment in the downtown area, would they be willing to open up to host events for teens? Where we can have them chaperone in there, and it'd be a safe place, and be registered with the city as a safe haven? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Milligan, if you would like to come and address those concerns?
Yeah, that's between, that's not our issue.
Mr. Milligan? Never mind, you don't have to address that concern. Excuse me. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
Well, I will say, I know a little bit about Mr. Milligan, and he has, he's done things in the past that created safe havens for a lot of the youth in our city, so I can see him being a part of that, even if it's not with his establishment, just doing it in general from all the work he's done in the past.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, so anyone else that would like to come up and speak to this public hearing, you have five minutes. Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. Members of council, do we have any additional discussion on this item?
Move for approval.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item UP dash 2202, and Madam Clerk, would you please read this agenda item and resolution we're considering?
Yes, sir, UP 2202, Hodges Manor. Resolution granting the request of Travis and Toya LLC doing business as Notorious Lounge for a use permit for an entertainment establishment at 6263 Portsmouth Boulevard. The property is zone neighborhood mixed use and is further identified as tax map 620 parcel 2. The generalized future land use map at the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the parcel as part of a mixed-use corridor. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads as a resolution granting a use permit, UP 2202, to Travis and Toya LLC to operate an entertainment establishment at 6263 Portsmouth Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present? Ma'am, you may come forward. If you please state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes, ma'am.
Hello, Latoya Hill, 317 Beechdale Road, and I'm one of the owners of Travis and Toya LLC. So I'm here today to speak on behalf of our company. We would like to, I guess, change the zoning from restaurant to restaurant with entertainment. And the reason is, we want to just attract more patrons to the building. Right now, it's really hard to get people to want to come out due to COVID. It's really hard fighting with other cities because of the tunnel, and it's really hard fighting with other cities because of, unfortunately, the reputation that we have in Portsmouth. So we have to be innovative and do some things to get people to want to come here. I travel a lot, and one of the things I notice is that when I go out to places, if there's something different going on there, you want to go back. You talk about those things to different people, you take pictures of those different things, you post them, and that's free marketing. So I did a lot of research, me and my team, and the best way to get more people to come out is by adding entertainment. So one of some of the things that we would like to do is to be able to host certain events, sport night, game nights, murder mystery, I went to that one time, that was really cool and innovative, I don't think we've had anything like that in the city. Have dinner nights, couple night, paint nights, karaoke is really big, comedy nights, trivia nights, poetry, open mic night, wine and whiskey tasting, I did that one time, I thought that was really good, that would be something that I think would bring people from different cities to Portsmouth. Podcast, that's something that's really new, really entertainment, the youth like to do it, it's something that we would like to do, a lot of people have access to do different things. I'm a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, they've asked me several times to host different events there, and galas and so forth, I would love to be able to provide a venue for them. I've been a school teacher for 10 years in the past, and I have a lot of connections to the youth, and, you know, I want to be able to do things for them as well and give back, and I can only do those things by being able to be granted this entertainment.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? Councilman Woodard?
How you doing, Ms. Toya?
Good, thank you.
All right, always been a great businesswoman in our city, and I'm liking that you evolved into being a restaurant owner, I can say that, because you have numerous business ventures.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Same question, you know, I know you have neighbors, business neighbors, I think we just approved a U-Haul establishment
Right.
in your area. Is there any concern with the parking of the U-Haul trucks? Are you guys taking any of their business parking?
No, we are very lucky, if you look at that parking lot, it is super big, I would love to be able to fill up all that parking lot with new patrons, I mean, it's got to be over 300 parking spaces there, I mean, it's more than enough. So we haven't had any type of conflicts with any other other businesses there, and to be honest, most of them close at 5:00, so we really weren't even conflicted with them when it came to parking.
Gotcha, okay, all right, that's all there.
Mr. Battle, so you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, I would be voting yes, but there are multitudes of avenues to contribute to our youth, and please take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you, I will.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Ms. Toya, I appreciate the work that you're doing in our community and for our sorority.
Thank you.
So applaud all of that. I saw the menu options that you were offering, and adding this additional entertainment, it would be a great opportunity. A lot of us do this kind of thing when we're traveling, you know?
Right.
I had girlfriends weekend out, and that's what we go and do, karaoke, because we don't have any place here, you know, where we can entertain into those like locked rooms, murder mystery, you know, escape rooms and things like that. Give people something different to do, so applaud you on those efforts, and for planning to approve those with conditions. Were there any concerns with some of the conditions that they presented that...
The only thing the planning commission stated, which I thought was a great idea, we do have a side door, and they just asked that it stays shut. I mean, that was it.
Right, and then one other concern, there was some concern about, I guess, the loud noise at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, how is that being addressed for those neighbors?
I'm a business, I'm a homeowner myself, never will I want to disturb anyone in their home, and when you go home, you want to be at peace, his goal is not to disturb anyone. But we have taken measures to soundproof the building, I do have before and after pictures to show that the sound installation has went up, and from what I know, the one neighbor that was complaining, she lives across Portsmouth Boulevard, that's four interstates of traffic, I just find it hard that she could hear anything four, through four lanes of traffic, but if she can, once again, we have already did sound installation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will be voting for your project.
Thank you.
Councilman Woodard, so you have the floor.
All right, just one more question, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
What's the hours of operation, and also throughout the week as well, the weekdays?
Well, right now, we're only open Friday, Saturday, Sunday. For Sunday, we're open for brunch, 11 to 5:00, definitely come out and check it out, the food is really good. Friday, we're open from 5:00 to 12:00, and Saturday, we're open from, I think, 5:00 to 1:00.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, thank you once again for being in front of us. What, do you have a security plan in place?
Yes, we have a contract with a security team called G7.
And that's for your hours of operation or certain times, what is that for?
Right now, we just utilize them when it gets kind of dark, about 6:00 o'clock, just to be proactive and to be safe. We haven't had any issues, but we just like to be proactive.
Very good. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank everyone.
For your time, yes.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, and so anyone that is in the audience who would like to come forward to speak on this matter, you will have five minutes. Once again, this is the time for anyone who wants to come forward to speak at this public hearing. We do have a registered speaker, Mr. Freddie Taylor. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The same thing that I presented to the first group, I would present to her, would you be open to allowing your establishment to be registered as a safe haven? And I heard you in your presentation said that you guys will open up for game nights and stuff for the kids and the youth, and by being a neighborhood mixed-use facility, that'll be something great, because like I said, the kids don't have nowhere, they don't have anywhere to go, they don't have no arcades, no game rooms or anything. So that's all I was going to ask, thank you.
Thank you, sir. One last call here, it's a public hearing, and anyone who wishes to come forward to speak on this public hearing, you will have five minutes. Seeing no speakers, then this public hearing is closed. Is there an additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council?
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to the city manager's report on our agenda, and Madam Clerk, item 22-dash-65, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, in earnest accepting hazmat response cost recovery funding in the amount of $1,026.16 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for the purpose of maintaining hazardous materials team response capabilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
And we do have one registered speaker for this item, Mr. Freddie Taylor. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, thank you. The only I have to say concerning this, like, which hazardous materials are we focusing on? Are we talking about the hazardous guns that are in our communities? And I don't believe that this $1,000 will be enough to get these hazardous guns off of our streets and our communities.
Sir, excuse me, Mr. Taylor, hazardous materials that's referring to this are under the emergency management, we're not here to discuss the gun piece because it's not germane to this question, so...
We were discussing hazardous materials, correct?
Sir?
I made you a question.
Sir, guns are not coming under this hazardous material item, so unless, sir, sir...
How can you define what's going to be hazardous?
Sir...
This just says hazardous materials.
Sir, you're out of order. Now, I'm going to explain to you one more time, it doesn't come under hazardous materials item. If you do not have any more comments toward this specific hazardous material item, then, sir, you will be asked to take your seat.
So, concerning this...
Sir, I just said to you what the criteria was.
But I have a question, I can't ask my question, it's still my time.
Sir, the criteria is hazardous materials as it relates to emergency management, that is not, that is not germane to the gun violence or the issue that you're talking about.
My question is, where is in here is the definition, which qualifies that hazardous material?
Sir, sir, it is not speaking to the item that you want to speak to, and would you please have your seat? If you persist, I'm going to ask the sergeant-at-arms to remove you from my meeting.
Well, I'm asking questions.
Sir, you're out of order. Sergeant-at-arms, would you please remove this gentleman?
That's what's my right to ask the question.
You're out of order, sir.
I think it was probably a misunderstanding, man, I don't, I'm not sure if you want to just kick him out.
Sir, I have the floor, and I'm asking you to remove this gentleman from my meeting.
Just a point of order. Hold on.
All right, I mean, I walk out, you ain't got to touch me, I walk out. All right. I believe that no city council has the right to give the definition that they want to apply to these things, and I'm a citizen of this community, and you're violating, which are fully intended, and I would appreciate it.
Council members, do we have any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, then Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item 22-dash-66, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, in earnest to amend Division 4 of Article 3 of Chapter 35 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, elderly and disabled persons' partial exemption from real estate taxes by amending Section 35-173 for the purpose of increasing income and net worth eligibility limits.
Thank you, ma'am. And council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this matter? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Sir, you have speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a speaker. Ms... Mr. Oh, this is item twenty-two dash sixty-six, Mr. Godalde Yatrowski. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. While I appreciate the intent of this particular uh, matter, I have a concern, I have a couple of concerns about the way it's being approached. So, there is a means test and a wealth test applicable to the implementation of this change. But I'm not understanding um, how the sixty-seven thousand dollar threshold was selected. Let me point out from U.S. Census Bureau data that the median income in the city of Portsmouth as of twenty-nineteen was around fifty-two thousand dollars. So that means that half the people in the city earn more than that and half earn less. By setting the threshold above the median income, you are also setting it well above the poverty line. Again, according to Census Bureau data, the party, the poverty guideline for a two-person household is around seventeen thousand dollars a year. For a four-person household, it's around twenty-six thousand. So this line is more than four, it's it's approximately four times the poverty limit for a two-person household and almost three times the limit for a four-person household. I don't think that's a good foundation. And let me explain one one further consideration. So you have senior citizens with income of sixty-seven thousand dollars who would be eligible to have their taxes frozen. At the same time, you have working people, people who are not senior citizens, whose income could be well below sixty-seven thousand dollars, but they're not eligible for that freeze. So essentially, these working-class folks who don't have retirement incomes to fall back on are subsidizing a tax break for people who are better off than them in terms of annual income. There's an equity issue here. To me, if you want to give tax relief above the level that was established a number of years ago, which is low, relatively speaking, but still higher than the multiples uh, of the poverty level that I was describing earlier, if you want to give tax relief, it would seem to me that a more equitable way to do it would be to reduce the tax rate across the board. That's my recommendation. Um, I I'm willing to be convinced if that sixty-seven thousand dollar limit has some reasonable bearing on ability to pay one's taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir.
Mr. Godalski?
Uh, Mr. Godalde Yatrowski, could you please remain? There's a question from council member, Dr. Whitaker.
As you know, the council attempted to make some changes to uh, these limits because they had not been adjusted in in years. So that was the motivation behind it, but but the issue you raised as far as given the poverty uh, statistics, there there are a couple of things you might want to consider is how is poverty measured? And that measurement, and when that measurement was developed, and has it been updated, uh, those are some issues surrounding even how we measure poverty today. Just to let you know, Reverend Dr. William Barber, who heads up the Poor People Campaign, which is an extension of what Dr. King was attempting to do, and the research that he has done with the University of Columbia, with Columbia University, the poverty and low-income measure that we had been using, according to Columbia University, is well off. It's showing that something like one hundred and forty million U.S. citizens are affected by poverty. So this adjustment here, sixty-seven thousand, um, the the previous measures and how we assess poverty today, I think that this is probably um, not where it should be, it could be even higher according to uh, the low-income and poverty persons that the Columbia University has found. So I I think it's pretty on target for our adjustment, uh, for trying to bring us up to date.
Do I?
You're welcome.
Have the opportunity to respond to that?
You're welcome to respond, sir.
And so, I don't have a quarrel with um, the concept, but I would like to see the formula for deriving that figure so that we know it has a basis in reality rather than than it being a number picked out of the air. And again, when the median income in the city is at fifty-two thousand dollars, it's it's a little bit problematic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other additional discussion between colleagues on council? Councilmember Moody, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the the figure wasn't picked out of the air at all. In fact, uh, I think it had been since the late seventies, maybe early seventies. Uh, over fifty years, yeah, where that uh, figure stayed the same. So actually, inflation index was applied to it, but we also looked at what our sister cities were currently doing. And I agree with Dr. Whitaker, if uh, it it probably should be higher than that since it had not been adjusted for inflation. So right now, it it it's probably the same number, just indexed for inflation, if you if you want to know the truth. So it it didn't come out of the air, uh, so I'll support it, and I I think most people on council will support it tonight.
And just for a matter of clarification, sir, um, it was fifteen years. Uh, that's what the manager shared, so just a matter of clarification, fifteen years. Yes, sir.
I think that, I think the number, because I I proposed this, and I think the number of household income had been the same since the seventies. So I'll I'll stick by my statement.
Very good, very good, sir. Thank you very much. Any other comments from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, um, we had a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We've now come to item twenty-two dash sixty-seven. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of ten thousand five hundred forty-two dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-two Social Services Fund for Adult Protective Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We are now at item twenty-two dash sixty-eight. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting CHAFE, CHAFE, Foster Care Independence Program COVID-nineteen Funding in the amount of thirty-seven thousand thirty-two dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-two Social Services Fund for the purpose of providing transportation assistance to eligible youth.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item twenty-two dash sixty-nine. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution to amend the cost allocation agreement between the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and second.
Move for adoption.
And we do have a speaker for this item, and the speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Yatrowski. Sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. I'm pleased that um, our transit agency has been the beneficiary of grants from the federal government during the pandemic period. And I have seen from attending the TDCHR monthly meetings on a sporadic basis, how well they have applied those funds to helping keep our transit system operating under grave duress. So one of the, one of the um, side benefits of this federal funding is an opportunity for the localities that comprise that board, that body, to reduce their individual contributions to maintain the regional transit system. The problem for me is not receiving, not the receipt of the money, but the idea that all of that money can be plowed back into the general fund. I think we are, if if we take that approach, we are passing up an opportunity here. I have long considered the transit service within the city of Portsmouth inadequate, except for a few routes here, and we have a very few routes to begin with. A lot of the city has no transit service at all. North of West Norfolk Road, there is no bus service. And related to that, there's no disability transit service for people who have disabilities because under the rules, you can't have uh, disabled transportation farther than three-quarters of a mile from an existing bus route. Additionally, one of our southside bus lines, the forty-one, which serves both Craddock and Cavalier Manor, operates on an hourly basis. That is, it operated on an hourly basis before we went into the pandemic period. That's really not adequate service. And so you have an underserved area that has bus service. Again, uh, one of the other areas that's inadequate is no Sunday service. Of course, until we had subsidized service from the Elizabeth River tunnels, our other main routes, the forty-seven and the forty-five, also were lacking in extended service into the evenings, and Sunday service was not available on Route Forty-seven, our main east-west route through the High Street Corridor. So what I'm saying is, I would like to see you looking to reallocate some of the savings from this change to improvements in overall service within the city of Portsmouth. Additional routes and additional service frequencies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if you, Mr. Yatrowski, if you could remain for a minute, I'd like to to um, make make a comment to you. As you know, that I I am a representative on the HRT Board, and so I would more, be more than happy to take those concerns uh, forward to the board for consideration so that we could hopefully get some improvements in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Is there any additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we are ready for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. We've now come to new business under our agenda and item twenty-two dash seven zero, boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor Barnes, Dr. Whitaker, do you have any appointments to bring forward at this time?
No, not today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We've now come to item twenty-two dash seventy-one, items submitted by council members. Council members, do you have any items to bring forward? Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on this Women's International Women's Day, um, I would like to let you know that the Women's History Month theme for twenty-twenty-two is women providing healing, promoting hope, um, and it's a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic, and also a recognition of thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history, much of which has been done with little or less pay, um, and without awards or recognition in what we do. So I take this day, Women's International History Day, to recognize and applaud women from all cultures for your ceaseless work in your homes, in your careers, and your various organizations. And I would also like to keep hope for the confirmation of Judge Kentanji Brown Jackson. So join me in applauding women from all cultures of life today.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilman Woodard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to uh, tell you guys about a recap that me and Mr., oh, me and Mr. Mayor went to, uh, we went to Sergeant William H. Harrison Post, one ninety. He spoke at the Law and Order Program, and we had some awardees, some of the public servants from our city, but um, just to give a a shout out or a list of them. Sheriff Department, we had Deputy Greg Forrest. Fire Department, we had firefighter Thomas Sessoms. Fire Department, we also had pandemic, yep, pan, oh, I'm sorry, paramedic, I'm sorry, paramedic, Thomas Sessoms. State Trooper, Try Mills. And Police Department, we also had awardee Officer Alan Washington. Our mayor spoke on our behalf, and we want to give a round of applause to all of our awardees and thank them for their service that they do in our great city.
Thank you, Councilman Woodard. It was a pleasure to be with you in the company of... It was a pleasure to be with you in the company of those heroes. Last Saturday night, myself and many citizens in the city of Portsmouth had the pleasure and opportunity to present or to participate in the Coldest Night of the Year, 5K Walk. The Coldest Night of the Year is a program that was put on by Dr. Darlene Sparks Washington and her team at Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. Many civic organizations, over twenty-eight teams, participated in this event with a hundred and thirty volunteers. This group, this was our first Coldest Night of the Year. And some of you may or may not know about that program. It's a national program that recognizes homelessness. And the purpose is to galvanize the community around the concern of homelessness and raise awareness, advocacy, and funds to help our most vulnerable citizens. It was so awesome to be out at the Coldest Night of the Year. And I think I'll add again, did I say that group raised twenty-eight thousand dollars? Twenty-eight thousand dollars to help the homeless effort here in the city of Portsmouth. And I talked to Dr. Sparks Washington today. I'm excited because guess what? Next year, we're going to raise fifty-six thousand dollars to help our most vulnerable citizens. So, I want to thank each and every one of you who participated. Most importantly, I want to thank the leadership team from Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless and the city of Portsmouth. I can say this on the behalf of our city and our city manager. Dr. Darlene came up to me and said, Mayor Glover, the city was phenomenal. The city was phenomenal in their support of this effort. So, when folks want to share about some of the other things that perhaps we have to improve in, this is one place where we receive recognition that the city was phenomenal. Thank you, city manager and your staff, for your support. Are there any others? Okay, Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just wanted to give a shout out to I C Norcom. I was, they invited me to their Black History Play, um, program last week. Ms. Kimberly Jones, the principal over there, she was the one who orchestrated the whole event, and it was hosted by Ms. Campbell Perry. Also, this past Tuesday was Read, I meant, I'm sorry, last week was Read Across America. I was able to read to Ms. Bennett's class in Lakeview Elementary School. They asked a lot of questions. They wanted to know what we did on council. So, it was a great, great time speaking with the kids. Just happy to be a part of that event, and that's all I wanted to say, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. We have now, we have now come to the item twenty-two dash seventy-two, Report on Pending Items. Manager Jones, are there any pending items?
I will send a report back in writing.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Manager. We have now come to the item on our agenda, non-agenda speakers, item twenty-two dash seventy-three. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker statement?
Yes, sir, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach your speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker, Ms. Marissa Adams. Ms. Adams. Thank you, ma'am, for coming tonight. You have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Marissa Adams. I'd like to refrain from putting my address on the record, but I'm a resident of Cavalier Manor here in Portsmouth. Last time I spoke, I came here and talked about some of my experiences, about where I'm from, living among poverty and violence. Today, I'd like to share about who I am and what I do. I have a background in early childhood education. Up until two thousand and eighteen, I worked for the same national faith-based nonprofit for over ten years. That's two associations, two cities, four branches, some in California, some in Virginia. I worked every childcare position available, included preschool teacher and childcare administrator slash director. In those capacities, I worked with youth ages six weeks to fourteen years of age. In two thousand and eighteen, I decided to go back to school to pursue a degree in social work. In December two thousand and twenty-one, despite dropping out of high school twice twenty years ago, I graduated sum cum laude from the Norfolk State. Behold, the green and gold. Before college, I never graduated from anything but preschool or maybe kindergarten. And now, at thirty-seven, I'm returning to NSU for my graduate degree this summer. But right now, at this moment, I run a super grassroots youth outreach and mentorship nonprofit in the city of Portsmouth. I'm also a sworn officer of the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court in Norfolk, where I serve as a volunteer court-appointed special advocate for children in foster care due to abuse and neglect. My fall internship placement was working at the UP Center in Portsmouth because I personally requested to be placed somewhere where I could serve within the city of Portsmouth. I'm a social worker by profession, entrepreneur by trade, and an advocate by heart. For the past sixteen years, I have lived and breathed youth empowerment, support, and education. Last session, Dr. Whitaker mentioned something to the effect of citizens speaking on unity or action yet not understanding policy. I absolutely agree. My entry-level understanding of policy, particularly social policy, as a result of my studies at NSU, is what brings me to these meetings. It's what makes me cautious about what I say and when I say it. Macro social work sets my soul on fire. In the meeting I attended in January, I was listening to the appointments of peoples and commissions and boards. In fact, there was a motion to remove certain previously appointed people due to not turning in a form, I believe. Before I could complete the thought, Mr. Moody spoke up, and he asked about the process for appointment for city boards and commission. I was thankful for that because I wanted to know that, too. I've encountered a handful of people who serve on boards and/or commissions within the city. The people I have encountered are the ones talking the most trash about the city and its elected officials. I find it quite comical and ironic. Lost my spot. Every time I speak down here, I'm encountered by additional citizens who want to speak negatively about city leadership. I listen, but I try not to engage. The amount of people benefiting from opportunities within the city yet contributing to the demise of the city's reputation and distrust and divide between council and citizens is baffling. In my opinion, these city council meetings should always be standing room only. We shouldn't just come down here when it's a problem. We should come down here because we seek to see and hear true accountability and transparency among city leadership. At the rate of what I observe, the ideal of true transparency and accountability in these chambers is a fallacy. Speaking of transparency, what's the status of the reopen application interview process for the new city attorney? I missed a special meeting on Tuesday, March first, in person, but I watched a replay on YouTube. I was shocked by what seemed to be a shift in priorities by transitioning into a closed meeting to discuss the performance of the city manager. I try not to speak out of turn, so I apologize in advance if I'm mistaken. But from what I gather, the frustration of a lot of citizens, including myself, is that council kind of be insulting our intelligence sometimes, trying to convince us that what we see, we don't see, and what we know, we don't know. The tension and contention amongst and between council is evident. Me personally, I've encountered people attached to council through boards and commission disclosing information to the public. So, it's not like some of this information is just coming out of thin air. We've watched and listened to meeting after meeting, agenda item after agenda item, for thousands upon thousands of dollars being approved to be funneled through the city despite citizens such as Donna Si's constant objection. But we're not seeing the results of anything. I mean, I see a lot of roadwork, that's all I really see. My observation is this, business as usual is no longer benefiting the city of Portsmouth. My advice to council, y'all got to check y'all motives and stand on the promises that got you in that seat. You should consider other people who you don't know to be on these boards and commissions. Get some fresh eyes and minds to contribute to the advancement of the city. This mysterious, no longer existing ARPA funds for nonprofit organizations should include all viable organizations, not just ones associated with the interests and affiliations of members of council. I came prepared to suggest bringing together a focus group or organize kind of like town hall meeting, but I don't know if that'll be good. I also was going to suggest the community liaison position, I think that the city once had, but it seems like that's in the works with the police department. So, now, my advice to my fellow citizens is keep following the money, keep seeking transparency with regard to fiscal responsibility. I swear I timed myself.
Please, please finish, please finish your thought.
Hold the city accountable to be good stewards of our tax dollars. My additional advice is, it's an election year this year. There's three seats up for council. Stop voting for popularity, clout, and relevance, and vote for results. Again, to council, elections have consequences, right? This cannot be the legacy of the, or the precedent of black leadership in a predominantly black city. You, me, y'all, we got to do better.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Walter Carter. It's good to see you, Mr. Carter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm going to table my comments to council tonight for something else. And I would have done it back there, but I didn't want you to call me out on it. So, I will talk with y'all probably later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Shamika Cooper.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Shamika Cooper. I live in Portsmouth, Virginia. And I just wanted to declare some things. I know I prayed before, but I'm gonna pray again and declare some things over the city. Portsmouth, Virginia is a prosperous and wealthy city. Jesus Christ is Lord in Portsmouth. It is a beautiful city, and people from the seven cities desire to live in Portsmouth. The righteous are in authority, and the people are rejoicing. The bonds of poverty and bondage are broken off of Portsmouth, and the people are free to worship the one true God. The people in Portsmouth prosper. Portsmouth is Kingdom of God territory. Businesses are lining up to do business in Portsmouth. The waste places are made like the Garden of Eden. I call Portsmouth blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Michael White. Mr. White, sir? Michael White. Our next speaker, Mr. Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council.
Good evening, sir.
City manager and elected officials. I come before you today, of course, talking about the unsolved murder victims. Corey Turri, Emmanuel Turri, Jaquan Johnson, Antonio Atkins, Colton Dodd, Tashik Wolf, Jeff Bazemore, Tajia Hicks, Darian Granger, Marjorie, Demond Sykes, Lakeisha Smith, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Norville, Yashin Kerway, James Hill, Dante Collins, Robert Artis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javon Williams, Kamadre Howard, Quam Omar Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Tim Shine, Brian Williams, Rakeen Gray, Curtis Walton, William Selfridge, Carson Baines, Mantonio Bunch, Curtis Richardson, Andre Hall, which is adjudicated, Kiara, Victor, David Branch, Lawrence Coward, Christopher Jacobs, Julius Howard, Harris, and Boobie Staten. I came here a little bit calmly today because I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank the city manager. I want to thank the Assistant Chief Nelson for meeting with me last week to get some things in order as far as meeting. So, I got to give them their flowers today. My thing is being proactive than reactive. We have to be more proactive before we have the results of the murders that have been occurring in the city of Portsmouth. I come down here not only to mention these loved ones or stand with these loved ones who've lost their sons and their daughters, but I come for, come to you to ask, to help me get results. See, a lot of people, you know, they're talking in the background, and they saying, chiming, and saying their negative comments about the citizens who come up here and speak. But again, some of you guys are doing absolutely nothing. You're just talking. It is amazing to me that you can ridicule and you can talk about the people that are coming up here, talking to get some help from you guys, and y'all got negative things to say outside of the council. That's crazy to me. But you want the city to support you. You want the citizens to support you. But again, I came to tell a story about a young man by the name of Julius Harris. He got killed in nineteen eighty-six. His death is unsolved. I bet you didn't know his mother died this past January, two thousand and twenty-two. She was a hundred years old. That means she lived thirty-six more years and never got no justice for her son. And I'm speaking for her. She is no longer here. And again, I don't want my mothers to go thirty-six more years without even the police department or the city council, somebody in leadership saying, what can we do for you? This is, this is reality, the reality that we live in, people. I don't know if y'all believe it, and I know some of you guys do. Like I said, I've met with a couple of you guys, and I, and I'm not coming down here to belittle nobody. But I get the phone calls. I'm not a detective, nor am I a Commonwealth attorney, nor am I a city councilperson. But I get the phone calls from these parents. And again, they need your help. And again, I thank the city manager for her efforts. So, I'm saying, y'all hired the right person. We just got to get her the right resources. Again, I was going to talk about Operation Legend, which I came last to in y'all's special meeting that Chief Moore spoke about. I know the history behind Operation Legend. I know the Trump administration advocated, it was the first people that, uh, owners, um, the administration that, 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 that wanted to initiate it. So, why haven't we done it? It's free. It gives us a hundred free federal officers where we are short in our police department. This has been a no-brainer. But again, I'm not an elected official, nor am I a Commonwealth attorney, nor am I a police chief. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si. Good evening, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. Tonight, I will be talking about the organizational structure of the city as it is right now. Why have an organizational structure? An organizational structure provides lines of communication to get work done to meet the needs of the people. The first need of the people is survival needs. Are the people in Portsmouth surviving? Not from what I'm hearing at the city council public hearings and from the news channel. There are also reports that meetings are going on behind closed doors that we, the people, are not invited to participate in. Let's look at the guiding principles, a compact for leadership. Focus on respectful communication, speak with one voice, share information, no surprises, lead by example, commit to teamwork, zero tolerance for disrespect. I wonder who applies these guiding principles? I learned about nine skills for navigating dialogue using nonviolent communication. This skills training class would be great to have in our community to teach nonviolent communication skills to the people. There is another aspect of communication, too. Ruby Payne explains it in her chart called "The Hidden Rules of Classes." Ruby Payne explains it in her chart called "The Hidden Rules of Classes." Each of these three classes, poverty, middle class, and wealth, has a certain mindset. One interesting aspect of the poverty class is the mindset of spending money rather than managing it. Another mindset of the poverty class is the driving forces of survival, relationships, and entertainment compared to the driving forces for middle class is to work and strive to achieve. Looking at the municipal organizational chart, this chart does not give any structure for communication by the elected or appointed with the people at all for the people to have an opportunity to self-govern. See the state of the city? Someone has requested federal assistance for Project Safe Neighborhood to gather resources and partnerships to curb the crime and violence in our city. Crime and violence comes from lack of structure and discipline. First of all, the departments do not have divisions noted. Next, there are no boards or commissions attached to the departments. Lack of communication creates a lack of discipline within the departments. The eleven million dollar settlement after a crash that killed a man and disabled a woman is an example. The Hursh Shelter hotline didn't respond to a request for help for a homeless couple on Sunday night. Who is responsible for making sure homeless requests are carried out? Many people are suffering in this city because there's no structure to create an orderly function for the people to get their needs met. How are the elected and appointed going to fix this problem of lack of organization and structure of the city? Structure and discipline will fix the crime and violence in our city. With communication flowing up and down and all around, the people's needs will be met to prevent the crime and violence in our city. Now, who will represent the people to set the structure for leadership? Done. Who?
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Darrell Redmond. Mr. Redmond, sir, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. How y'all doing? Today I came down here to inform council, the community, and the city that, um, we know that the Credible Messenger Program, which has been utilized over the nation, actually is one way to deter violence. And, uh, me and a few partners have got together and we ready to put on an event that's called From Prison to Purpose. The reason why we putting on an event From Prison to Purp, Prison to Purpose is because we understand that people with lived experiences can help deter violence in the city. Getting people together on a common page and getting them to understand and know that you can go through something and that their influence actually can be a direct impact in deter, in regards to reducing violence or causing people, um, just as, um, he was saying, it becomes something that's proactive. Because we know that our kids that we always talk about, I sit back and listen, and they said our kids are fueled by music. Our kids are inspired by sports and our kids fall victim to gang activity. So what me and a few people have got together with a team, we actually have Wallow, who leads one of, um, who leads one of the biggest podcasts that a lot of people watch, Million Dollar River Gang. We got Michael Vick, a sports, um, star. I'm flying here Larry Hoover Jr., who, Larry Hoover was one of the biggest gang members, as well as Loon formerly was Bad Boy. We bringing them in to get people in the room so we can start the dialogue and conversation that you can come from one situation and go to another situation and become impactful, helpful, resourceful, and utilize that to motivate, trans, transform minds in regards to our youth. So that's what I'm here today to tell the city that all the times, like you say, people talk about problems. I'm coming with a solution. And I'm asking for anybody wanting to be a part, anybody who can help. And you utilize this as one of the tools that we can use moving forward. Because there's a lot of people that went from prison to a purpose and everybody has a lived experience to matter. Everybody has a dog in his fight and that's what I'm here to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. William Dotson.
Hi, Bill Dotson, Park Manor. Thanks for letting me speak. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
It's good to see y'all too, all of y'all. I reviewed your plan on the crime and I think that it's a good start, but I wanted to say it's a bit shallow. But we need to start somewhere and we need to advance that crime plan that you put out there. The biggest problem I see with the crime plan is we're not talking to it. We're not promoting it. We're not hear you addressing the issues in the crime plan and expanding it. Y'all said it was a dynamic document. It's just been shelved somewhere. I'm just seeing some little red lines every now and then go on it. I'm not seeing or hearing from you here like we need to hear from you. I'm not hearing from you guys in the news like we need to hear from you. I'm not hearing from you guys in public meetings like we need to hear from you about what you're doing. The mayor asked me to sit down with, uh, the City Manager the other day and I wanna make time for that if we can, please, um, to understand some of the issues, but I don't need to hear it. These people out here need to hear it and it's not getting out. So this plan that y'all just had a meeting on, this emergency meeting, wasn't enough to cure the crisis. Y'all are just touching the edge of the iceberg. We need to have solutions for the immediate crisis, but we also need to address the long-term needs. And I'm not seeing y'all, hearing from y'all, addressing the long-term needs. We have some smart cookies in place. I was not at first in favor of hiring Ms. Jones as the manager, but I think she's done a fantastic job for what she's done. I'm very impressed with her. I'm, I'm very impressed with our police chief and I'm very, extremely impressed with our sheriff. We have wonderful, intelligent people in place. What we don't have is the resources and the tools these people need. And we need y'all to address, to give them those tools immediately. And I don't think that you're looking at giving them enough of the tools that they need out there. Secondly, we need a Commonwealth's attorney who's gonna support them. Now, I don't know whether you guys have control over that, but I need some public outcry about the Commonwealth's attorney's support for our law enforcement officers. Her chief complaint when I interviewed her was that she didn't have the funds to hire the people that she needed. She hasn't asked for any funds. I mean, how stupid can you be? Not to ask for the funds to get the people you need to do this? If that's your chief complaint, get off your butt and do it. Next, we need to change the financial economic solution of this city. You can't tax the poor in order to, to get enough money to make this city what it needs to be. We must have, I wanna be blunt about this. We gotta have some rich people in this city. We need some businesses. We need some industry to come into this city and they can't come in in the environment. I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to address that issue with the Economic Development Group and it needs to be addressed by the city, not by people coming forward with, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know what the name of it is you call it when they come forth with their own plans to you? Unsolicited, can you help me out? Yeah, unsolicited, thank you. Unsolicited proposals. We can't let them be doing it. Our city has to come up with a plan and our city has to publicly outcry for that plan to be implemented, modified only by these unsolicited plans. We need to have higher residential, higher industrial, and higher business, dollar businesses in this city to combat and support the poor people that we have. The only other alternative is to get rid of the poor people. I don't know that we want to do that. They're our voting base. They're the people. We have too much of a welfare state and the only way to support them is to get more rich people in here to tax them to support the welfare state. Welfare begets a welfare mentality and a welfare mentality begets crime. We can't have large, poor neighborhoods out here in our city. We, we've got to break it up a little bit so that the influence of the people who drive things can mix together with the people that can't drive those. We gotta have some money coming in. Ms. Jones, can we meet Friday afternoon? Would you please? Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Deborah Oglesby-Jones.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Deborah Oglesby-Jones. I live in the Hodges Manor area of Portsmouth. What I come to say is, my son's death didn't come at a price. You know, it was a statement made. You don't get paid enough to come here every week after week, other week, just to listen to the same old story. Well, this is a story that gonna be told every time I come here. It, it just, it hurts to hear someone say it's, don't pay enough. You'll never get a, be a rich enough to listen to us as a parent. That hurts. My son didn't come for a price. You're not gonna be a millionaire. At the way you going, we didn't vote you to be paid. We vote you to stand by us and speak for us. But I'm not gonna get emotional. What I do wanna say, the water towers? Have y'all paid any attention to Portsmouth water towers? It beginning to look like the city of Portsmouth, dirty, nasty. Nobody cares about it. Take some of that money and paint the towers. It represent Portsmouth. Soon you drive in here, that's what you see, a dirty Portsmouth. Rusty Portsmouth. And that's what we becoming. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me, could the person that left the picture up here, could they please come get that picture? I'm sorry. Um, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Ms. Sheila Joseph. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Um, can he set this up for a minute?
Is that what you're reading from or something?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Um, if he can set it up for you, yes.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you for allowing us to speak on behalf of the city of Portsmouth and my community and other places I'mma highlight. It's gonna be talking about what, number one, I want to thank Ms. Jones for immediately, um, sending somebody out to address the issue that I've been trying for so fast. I ain't gonna go into a lot of detail. You got my email. And, um, um, Mayor, you, you gonna get my email and you and you. And so the people that have been communicating with me and writing, I always tell people, what Sheila Joseph do? I get her email and I tell you to send me her email and then I respond and say, so pretty much everything that I said about in Fayetteville. Fayetteville have been in a situation for a long time and I'm gonna speed it up if I can 'cause I'm not a short-term talker. The tree have been removed on the twenty-second of February. I didn't get a chance to send it 'cause I've been working the streets. Um, that, the ditch have been played with. It's not what I expect, but I appreciate that they cleaned it up and they went to Wall Street, Ha, um, Grand Street, Nova Street, and Royal and Temple. That's our neighborhood. The next thing I wanted to say to you all, Mayor, I wasn't sure what you was doing until somebody told me. Now, I don't know what the rest is doing, but you was out over in the community where the water's been, over in, um, what you call it, A, A M E?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what's the name of the street? Effingham or something where they putting the pipes at? Well, whatever it is, it's where you was over by North Street, somewhere over that way. I'll find out so I can see the document, 'cause I don't like to talk about things I don't know. Then, the next thing I wanted to say that in this street from, um, the water was up to my knees and I got my video. Could you hold this for me, too? I have my video, um, to share what streets I highlight on my side. Then Douglas Park, you got Carver Circle. And the reason why I got maps, 'cause I want to point it out, even though you don't see, but y'all know your city, if you going around it from one community to another. Carver Circle, Rafford, and over by Douglas Park School. And, um, from Grand Street to, um, 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 Portsmouth Boulevard, him and I in pouring down rain with an umbrella so I won't mess up my camera. And so then we went so far on Rafford. I was scared to go beyond my knee, so I turned around. But also I wanted to address that crime in the city of Portsmouth been going on, but mostly back in the day when he was a child, was older people. Now, uh, another brother and I was, uh, kinda talking about kids killing kids. Well, that was when the young man, uh, protest and different ones about the officer killing the young man in, uh, Walmart. And so we are saying that all ages are being affected by that worldwide. And I'm not a person that just address the city I live, but I address a lot of other cities. If you go in the newspaper and you could look it up, Mothers Against Crime lost two sons. And they heard about me on radio called WPCE. Together we can make a difference, my talk show. And I did a lot of things, asking people for volunteers to come to the city of Portsmouth in the schools while he was in the school and my daughter. And I told them to come and volunteer their time. And me and six other parents implement, and a lot of people don't know, we implemented the, the, uh, program of bringing the police in. And we implemented to, uh, bring volunteers and, and address the different issues in Portsmouth to help the teachers and the principal. And they said, Sister Joseph, we can't do nothing. Here, you do it. So I did. And a lot of kids I was able to help. But then I put nineteen books.
Ma'am, ma'am, your, 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 your time is up.
Okay.
I'd like you to finish your thought and, and, and because your time is up, okay?
Okay. So you want me to stop?
No, I'd like you to finish your thought.
Okay.
You, you just started a sentence, so I'd like you to finish that.
Okay.
And then, then the next speaker will come up.
What I wanted to say that when they had the NEAT program, it was affected so well. People in other cities asked about it. And all I was saying that more community involvement from the citizens and all of us have to come together.
Yes, ma'am.
Because of the fact, this is an impact on our city and it's not no special ones that is being, you know, not touched by.
That's correct.
And I wanted to say that I respect everyone up here that doing whatever they do, but if I don't know about it, talk to me. Tell me what you do. Because I don't like to speak on it. People attack me saying, you, you, you. And I say, I don't wanna hear it.
Thank you.
Because you can't back up what you telling me.
Okay.
And I believe in that. So the, the, uh, game that I have, somebody came all the way Florida while I was on the radio to share that game.
Ms. Ms. Joseph, ma'am.
And I just wanted to wrap it up now.
Yes.
Share that game and I want to talk to the chief and different ones to sit down and talk to me.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm not a short talker.
Our next speaker, Ms. Elvira Johnson-Williams. Our next speaker, Ms. Elvira Johnson-Williams. Good to see you, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Good to see you, too. Mayor, Council, and everybody. My concern tonight is about Elvira. My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams. Apparently, the last time I was here, I stepped on some toes. Somebody got really aggravated with me, and, um, they threatened my life. And I said, uh, I'm so sorry, I'm not nowhere where I can get this on tape. I don't have any proof. I got rumors. But when somebody put a hit on you, I think that's called murder for hire. I think that's what it's called. So I'm here to let that person know, I ain't running, I'm not going to hide, I'm not scared. I'm Angelo, I rise. Now, if I offended you, and you hear me tonight, do what you did the last time, send a messenger, but this time come with him. Come see me, because when you threaten me, you threaten my family. I have asked folk to let me be. All I want is to live in this city in peace and in harmony. That's all I want. Have I contacted the police? Nope. Have I contacted sheriff? Nope. Why? I don't have the proof that I need. But I'm not scared. I'm standing right here. When you want me, come for me. If you want me, come for me. I dare you. Now, that's being said, hats off to our CFO, to Ms. Deborah White, to Ms. Angel Jones, to Ms. Lisa Lucas Burke, and to every woman in the audience. This is National Women's Month. I salute you. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Edward Bland. Sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. Uh, I just want to speak on an email that was sent out. I don't know where you got copies of it, but it kind of showed us some of, some of my residents, and they were kind of a little upset. So I'm speaking on all of the women that live in our particular units that we have, and the email was, it was, it was asked, okay, why do single women have babies and why doesn't the housing authority require them to get a DNA? And that became very offensive to them. Uh, and then they want to know if, if housing authority was going to allow women to have babies, then we should require them to be married. But anyway, speaking for the women that live in our units, I, I've just come down chairman to say that they're doing a great job, uh, they're not a problem. And also, the email talked about that the bulk of the crime in Portsmouth were because of low-income families. And I, I looked at, and I'm saying that we know that families that live in our units, of all the crime that take place in Portsmouth, it's probably less than 15% of all the crime that take place in Portsmouth happened on Portsmouth property. I'm very proud of our residents that we serve. They are human beings like anybody else. They entitled to have children like anyone else, and they don't have to be married. But for some reason, we have some folks feel that we are housing our families, they should be married if they have children, or they should have a DNA test. That will not happen, just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes our non-agenda speakers for the evening. Seeing no additional business from my colleagues on council, this meeting is adjourned. Stay safe and healthy.